And I'll call to order the Monday, June 16th, meeting of the Gardner City Council. The clerk will now please call the roll.
Councillor Brooks.
Present.
Councillor Cormier.
Present.
Councillor Dernalowits.
Present.
Councillor Hardern.
Present.
Councillor Heath.
Present.
Councillor Heglin.
Present.
Councillor Kozinskius.
Present.
Councillor Mack.
Present.
Councillor Tassoni.
Present.
Councillor Thibault Munoz. President Tyrus.
Present.
Those who wish may now rise for the opening prayer and pledge of allegiance.
Almighty Father, who sees you over all. Together this evening, inspire us to make decent sound decisions and direct us toward the attainment of good city government. We pray thee to bless and protect all people of our city and to so guide us, inspire us, that we may deliver in unity, harmony, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcement of open meeting recordings. Any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium, subject to reasonable requirements of the chair, as to the number, placement, and operation of equipment used, so as to not interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Any person intending to make such recordings shall notify the chair forthwith. All documents and exhibits used or referenced at the meeting must be submitted in duplicate to the city clerk, as they become part of the meeting minutes. Is anyone recording tonight's meeting? No response. Reading of minutes of prior meetings. April 22nd, 2025, regular meeting. May 5th, 2025, regular meeting. Councillor Cormier.
I move to waive the reading of the minutes and accept them as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Cormier, second by Councillor Tassoni, to waive the reading of the minutes and accept them as presented. Is there discussion on the motion? It's be a roll call vote, as every vote this evening will be.
Councillor Brooks.
Yes.
Councillor Cormier.
Yes.
Councillor Dernalowits.
Yes.
Councillor Hardern.
Yes.
Councillor Heath.
Yes.
Councillor Heglin.
Yes.
Councillor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Councillor Mack.
Yes.
Councillor Tassoni.
Yes.
Councillor Thibault Munoz.
Yeah.
President Tyrus.
Yes. Eleven yeas, motion passes. There are no public hearings. There are no communications from the mayor. There are no petitions, applications, or communications. Report of standing committees. Welfare Committee. Item 11519, an ordinance to amend the Code of the City of Gardner, Chapter 675, thereof entitled zoning, to amend Section 510, thereof entitled floodplain overlay district, in order to comply with the recent amendments to the requirements set forth by the Federal Emergency Management Agency. Councillor Mack.
Thank you, Council President. Engineering brought all of presented to the welfare committee. This is something that needs to be passed in a timely fashion by July 8th, to bring the city up to date on the floodplain overlay, and as well as to allow any residents that need to gain insurance. So I may make a motion that we pass the order.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Mack, second by Councillor Dernalowits, to pass the order. Is there discussion? Councillor Cormier.
Clarification, to send it to first printing?
Oh, I'm sorry. I make correction. I make a motion to send it to first printing. Thank you, Councillor Cormier.
Thank you, Councillor Mack.
Yep.
Motion made by Councillor Mack, second by Councillor Dernalowits, to send the item to first printing. Is there discussion? All those in favor, uh, sorry, roll call vote.
Councillor Brooks.
Yes.
Councillor Cormier.
Yes.
Councillor Dernalowits.
Yes.
Councillor Hardern.
Yes.
Councillor Heath.
Yes.
Councillor Heglin.
Yes.
Councillor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Councillor Mack.
Yes.
Councillor Tassoni.
Yes.
Councillor Thibault Munoz.
Yeah.
President Tyrus.
Yes. Eleven yeas, motion passes. Item 11533, an amendment to the Code of the City of Gardner, Chapter 675, thereof entitled zoning, to change and adds commercial overlay classification on certain parcels of land on Central Street. Councillor Mack.
Uh, the welfare committee met with this, as well as we received a presentation from Attorney Tree. Uh, the finance, uh, the welfare committee's in favor, and I make a motion to send it to first printing.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Mack, second by Councillor Heath, to send the item to first printing. Is there discussion? Councillor Brooks.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to make sure that we, that this is the amended version that we're approving, that has the parcels corrected on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Brooks. Further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councillor Brooks.
Yes.
Councillor Cormier.
Yes.
Councillor Dernalowits.
Yes.
Councillor Hardern.
Yes.
Councillor Heath.
Yes.
Councillor Heglin.
Yes.
Councillor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Councillor Mack.
Yes.
Councillor Tassoni.
Yes.
Councillor Thibault Munoz.
Yeah.
President Tyrus.
Yes. Eleven yeas, motion passes. Item 11534, an amendment to the zoning ordinance, Chapter 675, submitted by Chair City Church and 10 registered voters, to add a new section entitled Historic Preservation Project, amending the table of uses to allow, or the same by special permit, amending the Article 7, Off-Street Parking, Loading, and Drive-Thru Standards, subsection 675-740, to facilitate historic preservation projects. Additional amendments to the relief from parking regulations to be applied generally, and additional amendments more specifically stated in the petition and attachments. Councillor Mack.
Uh, on June 9th, we also received a presentation on this item by Attorney Tree, um, which was submitted by Chair City Church, uh, along with a joint public hearing with the planning board. Uh, the welfare committee is in favor, and I make a motion to send this to first printing.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Mack, second by Councillor Heath, to send the item to first printing. Is there discussion? The clerk will now please call the roll.
Councillor Brooks.
Yes.
Councillor Cormier.
Yes.
Councillor Dernalowits.
Yes.
Councillor Hardern.
Yes.
Councillor Heath.
Yes.
Councillor Heglin.
Yes.
Councillor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Councillor Mack.
Yes.
Councillor Tassoni.
Yes.
Councillor Thibault Munoz.
Yeah.
President Tyrus.
Yes. Eleven yeas, motion passes. Finance Committee. Item 11554, an order transferring $70,000 from various police department operating expense accounts to police department salary and wages. Councillor Dernalowits.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to start by noting the Finance Committee met on June 12th to review the more than 50 items listed under the committee on tonight's agenda. The meeting lasted approximately two hours, during which all these items were discussed, and is currently, um, posted on Gardner, the City of Gardner's YouTube channel. Uh, the volume money was submitted at once as a result of the administration's conservative approach to budgeting, particularly in light to, uh, uncertainties surrounding the city's employee benefits health insurance account. This is something that both the administration and the Finance Committee has been tracking. As the final funding for this account, which will be item 11584 later on on our agenda, became clear, the mayor's office submitted the related items, many of which in previous years would have come before us throughout the, um, late winter and early spring. In the interest, excuse me, in the interest of preserving time this evening, the Finance Committee will not be providing detailed explanations prior to the motions being made on each item. Our packet has the details provided from the exec, executive end, as stated, they were discussed during our meeting. Finance Committee will work to address any questions or requests for clarifications raised during discussion that may follow each motion. With that being said, Finance Committee was in favor of the order, um, and I move to pass it.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Dernalowits, second by Councillor Mack, to pass the order. Is there discussion? The clerk will now please call the roll.
Councillor Brooks.
Yes.
Councillor Cormier.
Yes.
Councillor Dernalowits.
Yes.
Councillor Hardern.
Yes.
Councillor Heath.
Yes.
Councillor Heglin.
Yes.
Councillor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Councillor Mack.
Yes.
Councillor Tassoni.
Yes.
Councillor Thibault Munoz.
Yeah.
President Tyrus.
Yes. Eleven yeas, motion passes. Item 11555, an order appropriating $130,000 from sewer enterprise retained earnings surplus to sewer enterprise chemical treatment account. Councillor Dernalowits.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance Committee was in favor, and I move to adopt the order.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Dernalowits, second by Councillor Mack, to adopt the order. Is there discussion? The clerk will now please call the roll.
Councillor Brooks.
Yes.
Councillor Cormier.
Yes.
Councillor Dernalowits.
Yes.
Councillor Hardern.
Yes.
Councillor Heath.
Yes.
Councillor Heglin.
Yes.
Councillor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Councillor Mack.
Yes.
Councillor Tassoni.
Yes.
Councillor Thibault Munoz.
Yeah.
President Tyrus.
Yes. Eleven yeas, motion passes. Item 11556, an order appropriating $15,000 from free cash to Elections and Registration Department salary and wages. Councillor Dernalowits.
I move to adopt the order.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Dernalowits, second by Councillor Mack, to adopt the order. Is there discussion? The clerk will now please call the roll.
Councillor Brooks.
Yes.
Councillor Cormier.
Yes.
Councillor Dernalowits.
Yes.
Councillor Hardern.
Yes.
Councillor Heath.
Yes.
Councillor Heglin.
Yes.
Councillor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Councillor Mack.
Yes.
Councillor Tassoni.
Yes.
Councillor Thibault Munoz.
Yeah.
President Tyrus.
Yes. Eleven yeas, motion passes. Item 11557, an order appropriating $170,000 from free cash to police department overtime. Councillor Dernalowits.
Move to adopt the order.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Dernalowits, second by Councillor Mack, to adopt the order. Is there discussion? The clerk will now please call the roll.
Councillor Brooks.
Yes.
Councillor Cormier.
Yes.
Councillor Dernalowits.
Yes.
Councillor Hardern.
Yes.
Councillor Heath.
Yes.
Councillor Heglin.
Yes.
Councillor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Councillor Mack.
Yes.
Councillor Tassoni.
Yes.
Councillor Thibault Munoz.
Yeah.
President Tyrus.
Yes. Eleven yeas, motion passes. Item 11558, an order appropriating $25,000 from free cash to Department of Public Works Energy and Utilities Account. Councillor Dernalowits.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt the order with the amended amount of $31,500.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Dernalowits, second by Councillor Heath, to adopt the order at the reduced amount of, or sorry, the increased amount of $31,500. Is there discussion? Councillor Dernalowits.
Thank you, President Tyrus. We did receive notification, um, from the assistant clerk through the audit, from the auditor, that this amount was incorrectly, um, here in the order. If you look at item number 11600, which is the money orders for consideration from the general fund, it is accounted for correctly there, coming out of, out for free cash. Um, so the, um, accounting there is correct, um, so we, I was, was personally in favor of, um, changing the order to this corrected amount. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Dernalowits. Further discussion? Councillor Heglin.
Thank you, President Tyrus. Um, just, I think it would be helpful really through you to the mayor and the auditor with a last minute change like that, if there could be a narrative, an explanation, or really even an accounting of the original line order, all the spending, how that number, where we didn't have a chance in finance to discuss it, I think accurately as a result. That would just be helpful going in. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Heglin. Further discussion? Mr. Mayor, would you like to speak on the matter?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, later on in your packet, there's a, uh, listing from the auditor, too, that lists all of the, um, free cash and retained earnings appropriations. It is correctly listed in that, uh, order that's there, um, that does show the running total of the free cash there, too. This was just, um, caught and, uh, just double-checked, we did this morning, uh, by the city auditor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Further discussion? The clerk will now please call the roll.
Councillor Brooks.
Yes.
Councillor Cormier.
Yes.
Councillor Dernalowits.
Yes.
Councillor Hardern.
Yes.
Councillor Heath.
Yes.
Councillor Heglin.
Yes.
Councillor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Councillor Mack.
Yes.
Councillor Tassoni.
Yes.
Councillor Thibault Munoz.
Yeah.
President Tyrus.
Yes. Eleven yeas, motion passes. Item 11559, an order appropriating $25,000 from Water Enterprise Retained Earnings Surplus to Water Enterprise Repairs and Maintenance Account. Councillor Dernalowits.
I move to adopt the order.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Dernalowits, second by Councillor Mack, to adopt the order. Is there discussion? Clerk will now please call the roll.
Councillor Brooks.
Yes.
Councillor Cormier.
Yes.
Councillor Dernalowits.
Yes.
Councillor Hardern.
Yes.
Councillor Heath.
Yes.
Councillor Heglin.
Yes.
Councillor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Councillor Mack.
Yes.
Councillor Tassoni.
Yes.
Councillor Thibault Munoz.
Yeah.
President Tyrus.
Yes. Eleven yeas, motion passes. Item 11560, an order appropriating $260,000 from free cash to Fire Department Overtime. Councillor Dernalowits.
Move to adopt the order.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Dernalowits, second by Councillor Mack, to adopt the order. Is there discussion? Clerk will now please call the roll.
Councillor Brooks.
Yes.
Councillor Cormier.
Yes.
Councillor Dernalowits.
Yes.
Councillor Hardern.
Yes.
Councillor Heath.
Yes.
Councillor Heglin.
Yes.
Councillor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Councillor Mack.
Yes.
Councillor Tassoni.
Yes.
Councillor Thibault Munoz.
Yeah.
President Tyrus.
Yes. Eleven yeas, motion passes. Item 11561, an order appropriating $30,000 from free cash to Public Building Maintenance, City Hall, Energy, and Utilities Account. Councillor Dernalowits.
Move to adopt the order.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Dernalowits, second by Councillor Mack, to adopt the order. Is there discussion? Clerk will now please call the roll.
Councillor Brooks.
Yes.
Councillor Cormier.
Yes.
Councillor Dernalowits.
Yes.
Councillor Hardern.
Yes.
Councillor Heath.
Yes.
Councillor Heglin.
Yes.
Councillor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Councillor Mack.
Yes.
Councillor Tassoni.
Yes.
Councillor Thibault Munoz.
Yeah.
President Tyrus.
Yes. Eleven yeas, motion passes. Item 11562, an order appropriating $30,000 from free cash to the mayor's unclassified telephone and photocall expense account. Councillor Dernalowits.
Move to adopt the order.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Dernalowits, second by Councillor Mack, to adopt the order. Is there discussion? Clerk will now please call the roll.
Councillor Brooks.
Yes.
Councillor Cormier.
Yes.
Councillor Dernalowits.
Yes.
Councillor Hardern.
Yes.
Councillor Heath.
Yes.
Councillor Heglin.
Yes.
Councillor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Councillor Mack.
Yes.
Councillor Tassoni.
Yes.
Councillor Thibault Munoz.
Yeah.
President Tyrus.
Yes. Eleven yeas, motion passes. Item 11563, an order appropriating $30,000 from Sewer Enterprise Retained Earnings Surplus to Sewer Enterprise Maintenance Crew Account.
Move to adopt the order.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Dernalowits, second by Councillor Mack, to adopt the order. Is there discussion? The clerk will now please call the roll.
Councillor Brooks.
Yes.
Councillor Cormier.
Yes.
Councillor Dernalowits.
Yes.
Councillor Hardern.
Yes.
Councillor Heath.
Yes.
Councillor Heglin.
Yes.
Councillor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Councillor Mack.
Yes.
Councillor Tassoni.
Yes.
Councillor Thibault Munoz.
Yeah.
President Tyrus.
Yes. Eleven yeas, motion passes. Item 11564, an order appropriating $30,000 from Sewer Enterprise Retained Earnings Surplus to Sewer Enterprise Repairs and Maintenance. Councillor Dernalowits.
Move to adopt the order.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Dernalowits, second by Councillor Mack, to adopt the order. Is there discussion? The clerk will now please call the roll.
Councillor Brooks.
Yes.
Councillor Cormier.
Yes.
Councillor Dernalowits.
Yes.
Councillor Hardern.
Yes.
Councillor Heath.
Yes.
Councillor Heglin.
Yes.
Councillor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Councillor Mack.
Yes.
Councillor Tassoni.
Yes.
Councillor Thibault Munoz.
Yeah.
President Tyrus.
Yes. Eleven yeas, motion passes. Item 11565, an order appropriating $32,000 from Water Enterprise Retained Earnings Surplus to Water Enterprise Maintenance Crew Account. Councillor Dernalowits.
Move to adopt the order.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Dernalowits, second by Councillor Mack, to adopt the order. Is there discussion? The clerk will now please call the roll.
Councillor Brooks.
Yes.
Councillor Craig Cormier.
Yes.
Councillor Dernalowits.
Yes.
Councillor Hardern.
Yes.
Councillor Heath.
Yes.
Councillor Heglin.
Yes.
Councillor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Councillor Mack.
Yes.
Councillor Tassoni.
Yes.
Councillor Thibault Munoz.
Yeah.
President Tyrus.
Yes. Eleven yeas, motion passes. Item 11566, an order appropriating $3,500 from free cash to Senior Center Energy and Utility Expense Account. Councillor Dernalowits.
Move to adopt the order.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Dernalowits, second by Councillor Mack, to adopt the order. Is there discussion? The clerk will now please call the roll.
Councillor Brooks.
Yes.
Councillor Cormier.
Yes.
Councillor Dernalowits.
Yes.
Councillor Hardern.
Yes.
Councillor Heath.
Yes.
Councillor Heglin.
Yes.
Councillor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Councillor Mack.
Yes.
Councillor Tassoni.
Yes.
Councillor Thibault Munoz.
Yeah.
President Tyrus.
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item 11567, an order appropriating $39,938 from Sewer Enterprise Retained Earnings Surplus to Department of Public Works New Equipment Account. Councillor Dernalowits.
Move to adopt the order.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Dernalowits, second by Councillor Mack, to adopt the order. Is there discussion? The clerk will now please call the roll.
Councillor Brooks.
Yes.
Councillor Cormier.
Yes.
Councillor Dernalowits.
Yes.
Councillor Hardern.
Yes.
Councillor Heath.
Yes.
Councillor Heglin.
Yes.
Councillor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Councillor Mack.
Yes.
Councillor Tassoni.
Yes.
Councillor Thibault Munoz.
Yeah.
President Tyrus.
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item 11568, an order appropriating $4,000 from free cash to City Clerk Professional Services. Councillor Dernalowits.
Move to adopt the order.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Dernalowits, second by Councillor Mack, to adopt the order. Is there discussion? Clerk will now, the clerk may now please call the roll.
Councillor Brooks.
Yes.
Councillor Cormier.
Yes.
Councillor Dernalowits.
Yes.
Councillor Hardern.
Yes.
Councillor Heath.
Yes.
Councillor Heglin.
Yes.
Councillor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Councillor Mack.
Yes.
Councillor Tassoni.
Yes.
Councillor Thibault Munoz.
Yeah.
President Tyrus.
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item 11569, an order appropriating $54,000 from Sewer Enterprise Retained Earnings Surplus to Sewer Enterprise Facilities Maintenance. Councillor Dernalowits.
Move to adopt the order.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Dernalowits, second by Councillor Mack, to adopt the order. Is there discussion? The clerk will now please call the roll.
Councillor Brooks.
Yes.
Councillor Cormier.
Yes.
Councillor Dernalowits.
Yes.
Councillor Hardern.
Yes.
Councillor Heath.
Yes.
Councillor Heglin.
Yes.
Councillor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Councillor Mack.
Yes.
Councillor Tassoni.
Yes.
Councillor Thibault Munoz. President Tyrus.
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item 11570, an order appropriating $575,000 from free cash to Department of Public Works Snow and Ice Removal Expense Account. Councillor Heglin.
Thank you. I'll give Councillor Dernalowits a break here. Uh, move to adopt the order.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Heglin, second by Councillor Tassoni, to adopt the order. Is there discussion? The clerk will now please call the roll.
Councillor Brooks.
Yes.
Councillor Cormier.
Yes.
Councillor Dernalowits.
Yes.
Councillor Hardern.
Yes.
Councillor Heath.
Yes.
Councillor Heglin.
Yes.
Councillor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Councillor Mack.
Yes.
Councillor Tassoni.
Yes.
Councillor Thibault Munoz.
Yeah.
President Tyrus.
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item 11571, an order appropriating $5,000 from Sewer Enterprise Retained Earnings Surplus to Sewer Enterprise Principal Outside Debt Account. Councillor Heglin.
Move to adopt the order.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Heglin, second by Councillor Dernalowits, to adopt the order. Is there discussion? The clerk will now please call the roll.
Councillor Brooks.
Yes.
Councillor Cormier.
Yes.
Councillor Dernalowits.
Yes.
Councillor Hardern.
Yes.
Councillor Heath.
Yes.
Councillor Heglin.
Yes.
Councillor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Councillor Mack.
Yes.
Councillor Tassoni.
Yes.
Councillor Thibault Munoz.
Yeah.
President Tyrus.
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item 11572, an order appropriating $62,000 from Water Enterprise Retained Earnings Surplus to Water Enterprise Overtime Account. Councillor Heglin.
Move to adopt the order.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Heglin, second by Councillor Dernalowits, to adopt the order. Is there discussion? The clerk will now please call the roll.
Councillor Brooks.
Yes.
Councillor Cormier.
Yes.
Councillor Dernalowits.
Yes.
Councillor Hardern.
Yes.
Councillor Heath.
Yes.
Councillor Heglin.
Yes.
Councillor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Councillor Mack.
Yes.
Councillor Tassoni.
Yes.
Councillor Thibault Munoz.
Yeah.
President Tyrus.
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item 11573, an order appropriating $75,000 from Water Enterprise Retained Earnings Surplus to Water Enterprise Facility Maintenance Account. Councillor Heglin.
Move to adopt the order.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Heglin, second by Councillor Dernalowits, to adopt the order. Is there discussion? The clerk will now please call the roll.
Councillor Brooks.
Yes.
Councillor Cormier.
Yes.
Councillor Dernalowits.
Yes.
Councillor Hardern.
Yes.
Councillor Heath.
Yes.
Councillor Heglin.
Yes.
Councillor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Councillor Mack.
Yes.
Councillor Tassoni.
Yes.
Councillor Thibault Munoz.
Yeah.
President Tyrus.
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item 11574, an order appropriating $90,000 from free cash to mayor's unclassified Waterford Community Center Building Utilities Expenses. Councillor Heglin.
Move to adopt the order.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Heglin, second by Councillor Dernalowits, to adopt the order. Is there discussion? The clerk will now please call the roll.
Councillor Brooks.
Yes.
Councillor Cormier.
Yes.
Councillor Dernalowits.
Yes.
Councillor Hardern.
Yes.
Councillor Heath.
Yes.
Councillor Heglin.
Yes.
Councillor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Councillor Mack.
Yes.
Councillor Tassoni.
Yes.
Councillor Thibault Munoz.
Yeah.
President Tyrus.
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item 11575, a communication from the mayor regarding the updated city administration financial policies. Councillor Heglin.
Move the communication to be placed on file.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Heglin, second by Councillor Dernalowits, to place the communication on file. Is there discussion? The clerk will now please call the roll.
Councillor Brooks.
Yes.
Councillor Cormier.
Yes.
Councillor Dernalowits.
Second. Yes.
Councillor Hardern.
Yes.
Councillor Heath.
Yes.
Councillor Heglin.
Yes.
Councillor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Councillor Mack.
Yes.
Councillor Tassoni.
Yes.
Councillor Thibault Munoz.
Yeah.
President Tyrus.
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item 11575, a measure adopting the FY 2026 Capital Improvement Plan for the City of Gardner.
Quick correction to 576. Yeah.
One moment, please. 11576. Thank you. Thrown off my mojo. Councillor Heglin.
Move the measure be adopted.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Heglin, second by Councillor Dernalowits, that the measure be adopted. Is there discussion? The clerk will now please call the roll.
Councillor Brooks.
Yes.
Councillor Cormier.
Yes.
Councillor Dernalowits.
Yes.
Councillor Hardern.
Yes.
Councillor Heath.
Yes.
Councillor Heglin.
Yes.
Councillor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Councillor Mack.
Yes.
Councillor Tassoni.
Yes.
Councillor Thibault Munoz.
Yeah.
President Tyrus.
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item 11578, a measure authorizing the payment of a prior year salary expenditure for the Gardner Conservation Commission. Councillor Heglin.
Move the measure be authorized?
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Heglin, second by Councillor Dernalowits, that the measure be authorized. Is there discussion? The clerk will now please call the roll.
Councillor Brooks.
Yes.
Councillor Cormier.
Yes.
Councillor Dernalowits.
Yes.
Councillor Hardern.
Yes.
Councillor Heath.
Yes.
Councillor Heglin.
Yes.
Councillor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Councillor Mack.
Yes.
Councillor Tassoni.
Yes.
Councillor Thibault Munoz.
Yeah.
President Tyrus.
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item 11579, an order transferring $251,000 from various fire department operating expense accounts to the fire department salary and wages overtime. Councillor Heglin.
Move the order be adopted.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Heglin, second by Councillor Dernalowits, to adopt the order. Is there discussion? The clerk will now please call the roll.
Councillor Brooks.
Yes.
Councillor Cormier.
Yes.
Councillor Dernalowits.
Yes.
Councillor Hardern.
Yes.
Councillor Heath.
Yes.
Councillor Heglin.
Yes.
Councillor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Councillor Mack.
Yes.
Councillor Tassoni.
Yes.
Councillor Thibault Munoz.
Yeah.
President Tyrus.
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item 11580, an order appropriating $40,000 from free cash to Graves versus City at All lawsuit account. Councillor Heglin.
Move the order be adopted.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Heglin, second by Councillor Dernalowits, to adopt the order. Is there discussion? Motion made by Counselor Heglin, second by Counselor Dernalowitz to adopt the order is their discussion. The clerk will now please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks?
Yes.
Counselor Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Dernalowitz?
Yes.
Counselor Hardern?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Heglin?
Yes.
Counselor Kuzinskas?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Tassoni?
Yeah.
Counselor Thibault Munoz? President Tyrus?
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item one one five eight one, an order appropriating thirty-one thousand five hundred and two dollars from free cash to the city's special education stabilization account. Counselor Heglin.
Move the order be adopted.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Heglin, second by Counselor Dernalowitz to adopt the order is their discussion. The clerk will now please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks?
Yes.
Counselor Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Dernalowitz?
Yes.
Counselor Hardern?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Heglin?
Yes.
Counselor Kuzinskas?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Tassoni?
Yes.
Counselor Thibault Munoz? President Tyrus?
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item one one five eight two, an order appropriating thirty-one thousand five hundred and two dollars from free cash to the city's vehicle stabilization special account. Counselor Heglin.
Move the order be adopted.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Heglin, second by Counselor Dernalowitz to adopt the order is their discussion. The clerk will now please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks?
Yes.
Counselor Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Dernalowitz?
Yes.
Counselor Hardern?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Heglin?
Yes.
Counselor Kuzinskas?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Tassoni?
Yes.
Counselor Thibault Munoz? President Tyrus?
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item one one five eight three, an order appropriating thirty-one thousand five hundred and two dollars from free cash to the city's capital improvement special stabilization account. Counselor Heglin.
Move the order be adopted.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Heglin, second by Counselor Dernalowitz to adopt the order is their discussion. The clerk will now please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks?
Yes.
Counselor Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Dernalowitz?
Yes.
Counselor Hardern?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Heglin?
Yes.
Counselor Kuzinskas?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Tassoni?
Yes.
Counselor Thibault Munoz? President Tyrus?
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item one one five eight four, an order appropriating three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from free cash to the city's employee benefits health insurance account. Counselor Heglin.
Move the order be adopted.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Heglin, second by Counselor Dernalowitz to adopt the order is their discussion. The clerk will now please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks?
Yes.
Counselor Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Dernalowitz?
Yes.
Counselor Hardern?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Heglin?
Yes.
Counselor Kuzinskas?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Tassoni?
Yes.
Counselor Thibault Munoz? President Tyrus?
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item one one five eight five, an order appropriating a hundred and thirty thousand dollars from free cash to the city's stabilization account. Counselor Heglin.
Move the order be adopted.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Heglin, second by Counselor Dernalowitz to adopt the order is their discussion. The clerk will now please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks?
Yes.
Counselor Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Dernalowitz?
Yes.
Counselor Hardern?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Heglin?
Yes.
Counselor Kuzinskas?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Tassoni?
Yes.
Counselor Thibault Munoz? President Tyrus?
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item one one five eight six, an order appropriating one hundred and five thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars from free cash to the Department of Public Works road resurfacing account. Counselor Heglin.
Move the order be adopted.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Heglin, second by Counselor Dernalowitz to adopt the order is their discussion. The clerk will now please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks?
Yes.
Counselor Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Dernalowitz?
Yes.
Counselor Hardern?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Heglin?
Yes.
Counselor Kuzinskas?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Tassoni?
Yes.
Counselor Thibault Munoz? President Tyrus?
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item one one five eight seven, a measure creating a revolving account for the youth center services under the provisions of chapter forty-four, section fifty-three E and a half of the general laws of the Commonwealth for which the balance shall not exceed one hundred thousand dollars. Counselor Mack.
I move to adopt the measure.
Motion made by Counselor Mack, second by Counselor Heglin to adopt the measure is their discussion. The clerk will now please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks?
Yes.
Counselor Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Dernalowitz?
Yes.
Counselor Hardern?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Heglin?
Yes.
Counselor Kuzinskas?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Tassoni?
Yes.
Counselor Thibault Munoz? President Tyrus?
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item one one five eight eight, an order appropriating fifty thousand dollars from free cash to the youth center services account. Counselor Mack.
I move to adopt the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Mack, second by Counselor Heglin to adopt the order is their discussion. Counselor Kuzinskas.
I would just like to acknowledge Representative Zlatnik's hundred thousand dollar earmark that he got for the new youth services program for the city and as part of this for item one one five eight seven as well as one one five eight eight, I would just like to acknowledge his support for the program through that earmark and I am excited about the opportunity to have this new program for the seventh through twelfth graders in Gardner. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kuzinskas. Is there further discussion? The clerk will now please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks?
Yes.
Counselor Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Dernalowitz?
Yes.
Counselor Hardern?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Heglin?
Yes.
Counselor Kuzinskas?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Tassoni?
Yes.
Counselor Thibault Munoz? President Tyrus?
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item one one five nine zero, an order appropriating three thousand dollars from free cash to the Historic Commission professional services account. Counselor Mack.
I move to adopt the order.
Motion made by Counselor Mack, second by Counselor Heglin to adopt the order is their discussion. The clerk will now please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks?
Yes.
Counselor Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Dernalowitz?
Yes.
Counselor Hardern?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Heglin?
Yes.
Counselor Kuzinskas?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Tassoni?
Yes.
Counselor Thibault Munoz? President Tyrus?
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item one one five nine three, an order appropriating twenty thousand dollars from free cash to Veterans Services Veterans Benefits Expense Account. Counselor Mack.
Move to adopt the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Mack, second by Counselor Heglin to adopt the order is their discussion. The clerk may now please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks?
Yes.
Counselor Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Dernalowitz?
Yes.
Counselor Hardern?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Heglin?
Yes.
Counselor Kuzinskas?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Tassoni?
Yes.
Counselor Thibault Munoz? President Tyrus?
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes.
Counselor Brooks.
Yes.
Counselor Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor Dernalowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Hardern.
Yes.
Counselor Heath.
Yes.
Counselor Haglen.
Yes.
Counselor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Counselor Mack.
Yes.
Counselor Tassoni.
Yes.
Counselor Thibault Munoz. President Tyros.
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item one-one-five-nine-six, an order transferring eight thousand dollars from city councillor salaries and wages account to city council's equipment operating expenditures. Counselor Mack.
Move to adopt the order.
Motion made by Counselor Mack, second by Counselor Haglen, to adopt the order. Is their discussion. The clerk may now please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks.
Yes.
Counselor Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor Dernalowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Hardern.
Yes.
Counselor Heath.
Yes.
Counselor Haglen.
Yes.
Counselor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Counselor Mack.
Yes.
Counselor Tassoni.
Yes.
Counselor Thibault Munoz. President Tyros.
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item one-one-five-nine-seven, a communication from the mayor regarding the city clerk copy machine. Counselor Mack.
I move to place the communication on file.
Motion made by Counselor Mack, second by Counselor Haglen, to place the communication on file. Is their discussion. The clerk may now please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks.
Yes.
Counselor Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor Dernalowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Hardern.
Yes.
Counselor Heath.
Yes.
Counselor Haglen.
Yes.
Counselor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Counselor Mack.
Yes.
Counselor Tassoni.
Yes.
Counselor Thibault Munoz. President Tyros.
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item one-one-five-nine-eight, money orders for consideration sewer. Counselor Mack.
I move to adopt the order.
Motion made by Counselor Mack, second by Counselor Haglen, to adopt the order. Point of order, Counselor Brooks, or Counselor Dernalowitz.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Yes, I make a motion to place the item on file.
Motion made by Counselor Mack, to place on file, second by Counselor Haglen. Is their discussion. The clerk may now please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks.
Yes.
Counselor Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor Dernalowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Hardern.
Yes.
Counselor Heath.
Yes.
Counselor Haglen.
Yes.
Counselor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Counselor Mack.
Yes.
Counselor Tassoni.
Yes.
Counselor Thibault Munoz. President Tyros.
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item one-one-five-nine-nine, money orders for consideration water. Counselor Mack.
I move to place the item on file.
Motion made by Counselor Mack, second by Counselor Haglen, to place the item on file. Is their discussion. The clerk may now please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks.
Yes.
Counselor Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor Dernalowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Hardern.
Yes.
Counselor Heath.
Yes.
Counselor Haglen.
Yes.
Counselor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Counselor Mack.
Yes.
Counselor Tassoni.
Yes.
Counselor Thibault Munoz. President Tyros.
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item one-one-six-zero-zero, money orders for consideration general fund. Counselor Mack.
I make a motion to place the item on file.
Motion made by Counselor Mack, second by Counselor Haglen, to place the communication on file. Is their discussion. The clerk may now please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks.
Yes.
Counselor Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor Dernalowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Hardern.
Yes.
Counselor Heath.
Yes.
Counselor Haglen.
Yes.
Counselor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Counselor Mack.
Yes.
Counselor Tassoni.
Yes.
Counselor Thibault Munoz. President Tyros.
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item one-one-six-zero-one, a communication from the mayor regarding the city's current net metering credits. Counselor Mack.
I move to place the communication on file.
Motion made by Counselor Mack, second by Counselor Haglen, to place the communication on file. Is their discussion. The clerk may now please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks.
Yes.
Counselor Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor Dernalowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Hardern.
Yes.
Counselor Heath.
Yes.
Counselor Haglen.
Yes.
Counselor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Counselor Mack.
Yes.
Counselor Tassoni.
Yes.
Counselor Thibault Munoz. President Tyros.
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item one-one-six-zero-two, a communication from the mayor regarding the city's streetlight payment account. Counselor Mack.
I move to place the communication on file.
Motion made by Counselor Mack, second by Counselor Haglen, to place the communication on file. Is their discussion. The clerk may now please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks.
Yes.
Counselor Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor Dernalowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Hardern.
Yes.
Counselor Heath.
Yes.
Counselor Haglen.
Yes.
Counselor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Counselor Mack.
Yes.
Counselor Tassoni.
Yes.
Counselor Thibault Munoz. President Tyros.
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item one-one-six-zero-three, a communication from the mayor regarding the FY twenty-twenty-six valuations for real property. Counselor Mack.
I make a motion to place the communication on file.
Motion made by Counselor Mack, second by Counselor Haglen, to place the communication on file. Is their discussion. The clerk may now please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks.
Yes.
Counselor Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor Dernalowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Hardern.
Yes.
Counselor Heath.
Yes.
Counselor Haglen.
Yes.
Counselor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Counselor Mack.
Yes.
Counselor Tassoni.
Yes.
Counselor Thibault Munoz. President Tyros.
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item one-one-six-zero-four, an order transferring twelve thousand dollars from Department of Public Works salary and wages to Department of Public Works vehicle fuel account. Counselor Mack.
Move to adopt the order.
Motion made by Counselor Mack, second by Counselor Haglen, to adopt the order. Is their discussion. The clerk may now please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks.
Yes.
Counselor Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor Dernalowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Hardern.
Yes.
Counselor Heath.
Yes.
Counselor Haglen.
Yes.
Counselor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Counselor Mack.
Yes.
Counselor Tassoni.
Yes.
Counselor Thibault Munoz. President Tyros.
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item one-one-six-zero-five, an order transferring ten thousand dollars from pool department salary and wages to pool department repairs and maintenance operating expenditure. Counselor Mack.
Move to adopt the order.
Motion made by Counselor Mack, second by Counselor Haglen, to adopt the order. Is their discussion. The clerk may now please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks.
Yes.
Counselor Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor Dernalowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Hardern.
Yes.
Counselor Heath.
Yes.
Counselor Haglen.
Yes.
Counselor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Counselor Mack.
Yes.
Counselor Tassoni.
Yes.
Counselor Thibault Munoz. President Tyros.
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item one-one-six-zero-six, a communication from the mayor regarding the FY twenty-twenty-six LA-three certification of qualifying sales. Counselor Mack.
I move to place the communication on file.
Motion made by Counselor Mack, second by Counselor Haglen, to place the communication on file. Is their discussion. The clerk may now please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks.
Yes.
Counselor Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor Dernalowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Hardern.
Yes.
Counselor Heath.
Yes.
Counselor Haglen.
Yes.
Counselor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Counselor Mack.
Yes.
Counselor Tassoni.
Yes.
Counselor Thibault Munoz. President Tyros.
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item one-one-six-zero-seven, a measure authorizing payment of a previous fiscal year's operating expenditure for a national grid bill in the amount of eighty-seven dollars and thirty-one cents. Counselor Mack.
Move that the measure be adopted, authorized?
Motion made by Counselor Mack, second by Counselor Haglen, that the measure be authorized. Is their discussion. The clerk may now please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks.
Yes.
Counselor Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor Dernalowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Hardern.
Yes.
Counselor Heath.
Yes.
Counselor Haglen.
Yes.
Counselor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Counselor Mack.
Yes.
Counselor Tassoni.
Yes.
Counselor Thibault Munoz. President Tyros.
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item one-one-six-zero-eight, an order appropriating fifteen thousand dollars from sewer enterprise retained earnings surplus to sewer enterprise overtime account. Counselor Mack.
Move to adopt the order.
Second. Motion made by Counselor Mack, second by Counselor Haglen, to adopt the order. Is their discussion. The clerk may now please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks.
Yes.
Counselor Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor Dernalowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Hardern.
Yes.
Counselor Heath.
Yes.
Counselor Haglen.
Yes.
Counselor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Counselor Mack.
Yes.
Counselor Tassoni.
Yes.
Counselor Thibault Munoz. President Tyros.
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Well done Finance Committee. Economic and Community Development Committee, item one-one-six-zero-nine, May Economic and Community Development Update. Counselor Kozinskius.
Thank you, President Tyros. Director Stevens gave the May Economic and Community Development Update to the Economic and Community Development Committee, and I would like to just go over some, this was at our May thirtieth meeting. I'd like to go over some of the items that he updated us on. We got an update on Rear Main Street. The start date for construction was on June ninth at the time of the meeting. Construction has begun on Rear Main Street. In terms of the Greenwood Pool demolition, there was a bid awarded, and they are currently gathering bonds and certificates to start the demolition, but is expected to start in the summer and be completed. The North Central Pathway, there's construction and paving that is happening on Crystal Lake Drive connecting two links of the bike path, which is the North Central Pathway and along Crystal Lake. And that paving will be continuing until June twenty-seventh. The Rome Building, I'm sure as the public has seen, we've all seen on two oh five to two thirteen Main Street, that demolition was completed. The final site walk-through is going to be happening shortly, even as of right now, it has actually already happened. I'm sorry, that was from the May thirtieth meeting, and then the land will be sold by the GRA following that project's completion. Staffing in the Community Development Department, there was two positions that they have been looking to staff. They had an offer out for the Assistant Director position at the time of the meeting. As of right now, the offer has been accepted. Director Stevens did update me on some of these things, it has been a couple of weeks since the end of May, and they are, at the time, they were, had been awaiting on the Economic Development and Finance Manager position to possibly go through second printing, which it already has, and so that position was posted, and they wanted to begin hiring for that position. And then another item was the Master Plan. This, the Master Plan had a public engagement event that was hosted on May twenty-second here at City Hall, and the point of that was for crafting a vision for statements for Gardener's future, and Director Stevens just wanted to give the message to, for people to continue to engage with the Master Plan. You can search Gardener Master Plan and go on the link from there, it's my social pinpoint link, to see the project updates and place markers on an interactive map of Gardener, provide feedback for it. That's the short of it. I would definitely suggest for people to continue to look at the Master Plan and what it does. It's a really big deal for us to be, have that here in Gardener. So those are the updates from the end of May with some other updates since the end of May, and we'll be getting an update this summer as well. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kozinskius.
And leading up to that, I'd like to make a motion to place the item on file.
Second. Motion made by Counselor Kozinskius, second by Counselor Tassoni, to place the item on file. Is their discussion. Hearing done, the clerk may now please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks.
Yes.
Counselor Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor Dernalowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Hardern.
Yes.
Counselor Heath.
Yes.
Counselor Haglen.
Yes.
Counselor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Counselor Mack.
Yes.
Counselor Tassoni.
Yes.
Counselor Thibault Munoz. President Tyros.
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Committee of the whole. Item one-one-five-four-zero, an order appropriating the sum of fifty thousand five hundred ninety dollars from available funds parking meter receipts reserved to various accounts for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Counselor Dernalowitz.
Make a motion to move the order.
Motion made by Counselor Dernalowitz, second by Counselor Haglen, to move the order. Is their discussion. Clerk may now please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks.
Yes.
Counselor Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor Dernalowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Hardern.
Yes.
Counselor Heath.
Yes.
Counselor Haglen.
Yes.
Counselor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Counselor Mack.
Yes.
Counselor Tassoni.
Yes.
Counselor Thibault Munoz. President Tyros.
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item one-one-five-four-one, an order appropriating the sum of five hundred and twelve thousand six hundred ninety-nine dollars and seventeen cents from sewer surplus retained earnings to fund the FY twenty-twenty-six revenue budget. Counselor Dernalowitz.
I move to adopt the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Dernalowitz, second by Counselor Mack, to adopt the order. Is their discussion. The clerk may now please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks.
Yes.
Counselor Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor Dernalowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Hardern.
Yes.
Counselor Heath.
Yes.
Counselor Haglen.
Yes.
Counselor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Counselor Mack.
Yes.
Counselor Tassoni.
Yes.
Counselor Thibault Munoz. President Tyros.
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item one-one-five-four-two, an order appropriating the sum of two hundred and thirty-two thousand four hundred and six dollars and seventy-one cents from water surplus retained earnings to fund the FY twenty-twenty-six revenue budget. Counselor Dernalowitz.
Move to adopt the order.
Motion made by Counselor Dernalowitz, second by Counselor Haglen, to adopt the order. Is their discussion. The clerk will now please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks.
Yes.
Counselor Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor Dernalowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Hardern.
Yes.
Counselor Heath.
Yes.
Counselor Haglen.
Yes.
Counselor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Counselor Mack.
Yes.
Counselor Tassoni.
Yes.
Counselor Thibault Munoz. President Tyros.
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item one-one-five-four-three, an order appropriating the sum of ninety-four thousand three hundred and ten dollars from landfill surplus retained earnings to fund the FY twenty-twenty-six revenue budget. Counselor Dernalowitz.
Move to adopt the order.
Motion made by Counselor Dernalowitz, second by Counselor Haglen, to adopt the order. Is their discussion. The clerk may now please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks.
Yes.
Counselor Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor Dernalowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Hardern.
Yes.
Counselor Heath.
Yes.
Counselor Haglen.
Yes.
Counselor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Counselor Mack.
Yes.
Counselor Tassoni.
Yes.
Counselor Thibault Munoz. President Tyros.
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item one-one-five-four-four, an order appropriating the sum of two hundred and sixty-four thousand ninety-two dollars from available funds cable commission fees reserved to cable commission budget. Counselor Dernalowitz.
Mr. President, I move to adopt the order.
Motion made by Counselor Dernalowitz, second by Counselor Haglen, to adopt the order. Is their discussion. Clerk may now please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks.
Yes.
Counselor Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor Dernalowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Hardern.
Yes.
Counselor Heath.
Yes.
Counselor Haglen.
Yes.
Counselor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Counselor Mack.
Yes.
Counselor Tassoni.
Yes.
Counselor Thibault Munoz. President Tyros.
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item one-one-five-four-five, an order appropriating various sums of money totaling twelve million two hundred and eleven thousand twenty-six dollars from available enterprise funds, various receipts reserved to various accounts for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Counselor Haglen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the order passed in the reduced amount of twelve million fifty-four thousand twenty dollars and seventy-one cents, which is a reduction of one hundred and fifty-seven thousand five dollars and twenty-nine cents, specifically from the line items pertaining to non-union salaries, so as to set them back to the current ordinance.
Second. Motion made by Counselor Haglen, second by Counselor Dernalowitz, to pass the order in the reduced amount of twelve million fifty-four thousand twenty dollars and seventy-one cents. Is their discussion. Counselor Haglen.
Thank you, Mr. President. As President Tyros suggested, and we discussed during one of our previous budget meetings, where we have not yet made a decision on the new salary ordinance proposed by the mayor, that it's prudent to amend the budget down to the current ordained numbers. Doing this will allow us to go through the mayor's proposal in detail without pre-committing to final numbers, which in essence is what we would be doing if we do not accept the amendment. Last meeting, it was argued that these numbers are the result of negotiations, and we should accept them as is. However, we really don't know that, and I don't believe that we actually have been told that to date, so as we're beginning our review and just starting that process of the proposal, what went into that proposal and how it was formed are all things we need to weigh to make our decision. I think the responsible thing for us to do is to adopt the amendment and evaluate the proposal from where the ordinance currently is. I want to add that I don't think voting for this amendment is necessarily in opposition to raises or a step system. You can support raises and agree to have a fair and thorough discussion. We should not start with a predetermined conclusion. Until and if we pass the mayor's proposal, or another proposal, or any proposal to amend or replace the non-union salary ordinance, the current ordinance remains in force, and no salary can be paid above that authorization. Should we make any changes to what the mayor has proposed, and I think and hope we will, the numbers in this budget proposal will need to be adjusted. So again, I think this is the logical, responsible, and procedurally prudent next step. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Haglen. Further discussion. The clerk may now please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks.
Mr. President, may I just ask, this is on, we're voting on amended, are we voting to amend, or are we voting?
This is voting to pass the order in the reduced amount.
Thank you. Yes.
Counselor Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor Dernalowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Hardern.
Yes.
Counselor Heath.
Yes.
Counselor Haglen.
Yes.
Counselor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Counselor Mack.
Yes.
Counselor Tassoni.
Yes.
Counselor Thibault Munoz. President Tyros.
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item one-one-five-four-six, in order to raise and appropriate the sum of thirty-six million seven hundred and fifteen thousand one hundred eighty-seven dollars for school department budget for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Counselor Dernalowitz.
Move to adopt the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Dernalowitz, second by Counselor Mack, to adopt the order. Is their discussion. The clerk may now please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks.
Yes.
Counselor Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor Dernalowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Hardern.
Yes.
Counselor Heath.
Yes.
Counselor Haglen.
Yes.
Counselor Kozinskius.
Yes.
Counselor Mack.
Yes.
Counselor Tassoni.
Yes.
Counselor Thibault Munoz. President Tyros.
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item one-one-five-four-seven, in order to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-nine million one hundred ninety-three thousand one hundred forty-six dollars for the various departments of the city for the expense budget for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-five through to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Counselor Dernalowitz.
Move to adopt the order.
Motion made by Counselor Dernalowitz, second by Counselor Haglen, to adopt the order. Is their discussion. Counselor Haglen.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is really the first full budget process I've gone through from beginning to end. In preparing for this, I went back and looked at previous year's budgets, what those debates looked like, and how that process went. I want to first say thank you to the mayor. I think he's done a good job increasing the level of transparency along the way, making the budget process easier to follow, and making the information more accessible. The amount of information the council has received has continued to increase. One small example, but this year, as far as I can tell, is the first time all the budget information has been formatted to be even word-searchable, to make it easier and quicker to find specific items and help with our reviews. I do however want to comment on something I think is important with some underlying issues we face. The budget proposes about one point three million in new spending. The way it was proposed, salary increases totaled about one and a half million before the amendment we made. What that means is we're looking at greater and greater impact on operational expenses. Basically, we have less money for other things because salaries are an increasing portion of our expenses. That's largely due to economic forces outside of our control, but I do think it means we need to exercise some more fiscal discipline. We've talked about the clerk copier a lot, because it's a good example of the challenge we face. That's just one relatively small example that didn't make it into the budget for years, and didn't make the cut for free cash until now. Thank you, Mr. President. So this is really the first full budget process I've gone through from beginning to end. In preparing for this, I went back and looked at previous year's budgets, what those debates looked like, and how that process went. I want to first say thank you to the mayor. I think he's done a good job increasing the level of transparency along the way, making the budget process easier to follow, and making the information more accessible. The amount of information the council has received has continued to increase. One small example, but this year, as far as I can tell, is the first time all the budget information has been formatted to be even word searchable, to make it easier and quicker to find specific items and help with our reviews. I do however want to comment on something I think is important with some underlying issues we face. The budget proposes about 1.3 million in new spending. The way it was proposed, salary increases totaled about one and a half million before the amendment we made. What that means is we're looking at greater and greater impact on operational expenses. Basically, we have less money for other things because salaries are an increasing portion of our expenses. That's largely due to economic forces outside of our control, but I do think it means we need to exercise some more fiscal discipline. We've talked about the clerk's copy a lot because it's a good example of the challenge we face. That's just one relatively small example that didn't make it into the budget for years and didn't make the cut for free cash until now. If you look at the scope of the free cash appropriations we voted on tonight, and really every year, it's around the same. There's very, very little in the way of true discretionary spending left at the end, and as you probably recall, a few months ago, we were told we were facing a huge hole in health insurance costs that at the time looked like it would eat up whatever was left. Luckily, that didn't end up happening and turned out to be an accounting error to some degree, but again, I think it means we need to exercise more fiscal discipline. So as we look at free cash appropriations in the context of this budget, this is my concern. Are we budgeting and crossing our fingers that free cash is high enough to cover building gaps? I'm not packing, picking on anything in particular, but I want to point out an example of what I mean in terms of, right, these department budgets. Tonight, we were asked for an additional $12,000 for fuel for city vehicles, for $262,000 for the year. Last year, we spent $267,000 on fuel for city vehicles. Both years and in this year's budget for next year, the mayor allotted only 250, $250,000. This is something I think I heard commented on in different meetings as well, is why are we under-budgeting these things that historically we see more money being needed? If you look through the budget, you can see other examples, and I want to be clear, I don't think money's being wasted, I don't think there's anything like that, but my concern stems from, as a budgeting practice, to be expecting free cash to pan out to cover all of these overages. Obviously, there's so many factors with many of these line items, but if too many of the factors go against us in the same fiscal year, it could put us in a really tight spot. I don't think that enough is being done to hedge against that, and I think it compounds the budget pressures we already face, and I think it is, as a practice, one of the root causes of the clerk's copy issue. So I think this is a good budget. I'll be voting for it, but I do think more needs to be done on these issues going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Haglund, for the discussion. The clerk will now please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks?
Yes.
Counselor Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Dernalowits?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Haglund?
Yes.
Counselor Kozinskius?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Tassoni?
Yes.
Counselor Thibault Munoz?
Yeah.
President Tyrus?
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item 11548, an order to raise and appropriate the sum of $14,411,619 for the various departments of the city for the salary and labor budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2026. Counselor Haglund?
I move the order passed in the reduced amount of $14,207,026.16, which is a reduction of $204,592.40 specifically from the line items pertaining to non-union salaries so as to set them back to the current ordinance.
Second. Motion made by Counselor Haglund, second by Counselor Dernalowits, to pass the order in the reduced amount is their discussion. Counselor Brooks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think what we're doing is wise, I understand, and it doesn't put any undue pressure on the discussion about department head salaries because the revenue has already been estimated for this budget, so it's not a problem to add these numbers back into the budget should the council decide to approve the ordinance change that the mayor has proposed. I do think, however, it's important that we take the time and make the effort to study and work on that ordinance because I think it's dangerous to have, especially your department heads, who are the people representing us in the city workforce, to have been shown something that had promise and then has, I won't say it's been taken out from under them, but has been, is possibly delayed in them getting, and so we just have to make sure that we take the time to go through the process, and if we're going to make a change, make a change. If we choose not to, the consequences are on us. But I have no problem with what's being proposed here. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Brooks, for the discussion. The clerk will now please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks?
Yes.
Counselor Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Dernalowits?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Haglund?
Yes.
Counselor Kozinskius?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Tassoni?
Yes.
Counselor Thibault Munoz?
Yeah.
President Tyrus?
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item 11549, a measure authorizing the FY 2026 revolving funds pursuant to MGL Chapter 44, Subsection E half, for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2026. Counselor Dernalowits?
Move to authorize the measure?
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Dernalowits, second by, motion made by Counselor Dernalowits, second by Counselor Haglund to authorize the measure is their discussion. Counselor Brooks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to ask about two of the revolving funds. One is the Council on Aging Recreational Activities. We just bumped that up from 40 to 60. Is there intention to adjust it to 60,000 for next year at some point? And then we just added the Youth Center Services Revolving Fund, which is not, is new, but I don't believe it's on this list, or the list that I have.
Is that a question to the mayor through the chair?
I just want to know what we're doing. If it's the mayor, it would answer it. Yes?
Counselor Dernalowits, would you have a report?
Senior Center one, we haven't authorized the increase yet at this point. That's still in the Finance Committee.
Well, the 60 is?
The 60 is, yes, so, answer that question. Is there, I'm not sure on the Youth Commission, the Youth side one.
Through, through the chair to the mayor?
Sure, yes.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to respond to the council?
Sure, thank you, Mr. President and councilors. Yes, because the account hadn't been created when this was submitted, I didn't feel it was prudent to be including it into this list, so it would, it is something that would have to be added into this authorization for the next fiscal year to be.
So, so would it, would it be your intention to send it up for the next meeting?
Yes.
Basically?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Does that satisfy your question, council? Thank you, counselor. Further discussion. The clerk may now please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks?
Yes.
Counselor Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Dernalowits?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Haglund?
Yes.
Counselor Kozinskius?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Tassoni?
Yes.
Counselor Thibault Munoz?
Yeah.
President Tyrus?
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Unfinished business and magistrate consideration, there is no unfinished business. New business, there is no new business. Counselor comments and remarks. Are there any counselor comments or remarks? Counselor Brooks?
I will, I will be brief. I'm facing the clock and I can see the second hand, and just, I started to keep track of how long these orders took, and we were processing them between 45 and 50 seconds. Thank.
Thank you, Counselor Brooks. Further counselor comments and remarks. Counselor Kozinskius?
But I would also like to point out Counselor Dernalowits's remarks earlier that there was a two and a half hour Finance Committee meeting that thoroughly discussed all of these, and I would certainly encourage the public to watch that meeting as well as our subcommittee meetings. Again, a lot of work is done in subcommittee. A lot of that is due to the rule changes and how we take up items first in subcommittee before they come to the council, and I just think that's something that's really important to remember because it is, it's about six months of that right now, and, but a lot of work is done in subcommittee particularly for the budget, so just wanted to make sure I commented that. Thank you, President Tyrus.
Thank you, Counselor Kozinskius. Further counselor comments and remarks. Counselor Heath?
Thank you, President Tyrus. I just want to say Happy Belated Father's Day to all the fathers, whether you have childrens or fur babies. Happy Father's Day. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Heath, for the counsel comments and remarks. I'd just like to thank the councilors, the mayor, the department heads for getting us through this year's budget cycle. I think there was a lot of good discussion, there was a lot of time spent, consideration made, and I appreciate all the effort. So thank you. With that, I'll adjourn after the closing prayer.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Counselor Tassoni, second by Counselor Craig Cormier to adjourn. May the clerk please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks?
Yes, please.
Counselor Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Dernalowits?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Haglund?
Yes.
Counselor Kozinskius?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Tassoni?
Yeah.
Counselor Thibault Munoz?
Yeah.
President Tyrus?
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes.
Oh my God, who sees overall? As we adjourn, we thank thee for the opportunity of joint deliberation and action within the course of this meeting. Bless the Lord, all who are gathered here and the people who represent whom we are, and do thou attend to our common welfare until our next meeting. Amen.